Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Select meeting of March 3rd, 2020. I'm calling the meeting to order here at Memorial Town Hall. So, does anybody have any announcements they would like to make?
No.
Ed? No? Diana?
No.
Marlene, is there anything we need to announce on? Okay.
Nothing.
All right, thank you. I'll just read the public participation process for our select board meetings. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular -- that word gets me every time. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the select board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So, thank you. Is there anybody here for public forum? All right. Seeing none, we'll ask for -- I didn't see any minutes, right, that we need to approve tonight? It's okay.
No, and I owe some minutes, but I will get those.
That's fine. I know that's a standard entry that we have on our agendas. So, under posted business, we have a few things tonight, but we'd like to start off by hearing from some members of the 350th Committee and get an update from them. I guess we'll just hand it off to you guys, and if you would be so kind, just give us the update that you were looking for the townspeople to have.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Just like to thank you for putting us on the agenda tonight.
Sure.
And what we'd like to talk about today is incorporation day, okay? And also, the event and how it's going to transpire and what everybody's role is proposed and so on as we go through this. I also have two other things that, at the end there, I'll bring up, the parade route. I have a map for the parade route that's been certified last night. And also, I'd like to talk a little bit about the town meeting report. So, hopefully, we can just push right through this here. Sheriff, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. We prepared some packets for you, so if maybe you could take a look on the left side.
Could you just maybe introduce yourself or town?
Of course, sorry about that. Sheriff Nicholas Mainstreet, and I'm a member of the steering committee and also the historical representative for the steering committee, for the 350th.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, okay. On the left side of your packet are two pieces, two items, and I'll just take you quickly through the documents. The first document has been information that has been distributed to the town for the past few months in terms of the activities for incorporation day and also the content, the context really, of the historical nature. The historical nature is May 31st is the official incorporation day of Hatfield. It was the recording of the General Court in Boston in 1670 that we actually became officially a township of our own. So, the second piece, the second document in the left side of the folder is a list of names, including federal and state officials, that we've sent a save-the-date letter to. We do have some confirmations on elected officials. State Rep. Lindsaya Sabidosa has confirmed that she will be in attendance as State Senator Joanne Comfort. I'm still waiting to hear confirmation from the governor's office. I talked to them the other day, and they said to give them a call back around March 20th to check in with them. However, they are working on the citation for that day, and that should be delivered to you prior to May 31st. I also spoke to Representative Jim McGovern's office, and he does plan to be here unless he's called away for some urgent thing. So, they did say that we could say that his intent is to be here. Also, we sent around 60 letters to local officials, local town officials, in addition to Hatfield town officials. Basically, again, it's save the date. I have had confirmation from some of the other local town officials on page 2 of 2. I've heard from the Deerfield Board of Selectmen who has confirmed that they will be in attendance along with the Whately Historical Society. So, the emails have been coming in in terms of confirmation as to their attendance for that day. I'll probably give it a few more weeks and probably reach out to them telephone to see if they would be coming to this event. So, that's the left side of your folder. On the right side of your folder is basically what is going to be planned for that day. I would say it's tentative in the sense that we don't know exactly who's going to be in attendance, but for the most part, the activities are pretty well-firmed. We're going to start, well, as you know, between 1660 and 1670, the residents, the inhabitants on the west side of the river had to cross the Connecticut River. It was called the Great River, minimum every week to attend services, and even more than that for meetings. So, and to honor that crossing, we basically have a team building a boat, a canoe. Actually, it's not a canoe. It's really a yaw. It's a similar craft that was probably used in the 1660s because it was used by the Dutch in the Lower Connecticut River. The records in Hatfield really don't indicate exactly what kind of boat was used. They do call out canoe, however, we don't have any dimensions of that boat. But I've given you some details on the size of the boat and the fact that it's still under construction. The crew building the boat needs to wait for warmer weather to finish the boat construction. But I've given you a picture in terms of what it's going to look like. So, that's going to be the first thing in the early morning, the crossing from Hadley to the Hatfield side. And we do have backups. If the river is not suitable that day, we'll just bring the boat up to the center of town for people to take a look at. At 10:00 a.m., the Hatfield Congregational Church will have a service, and Reverend Randy is going to invite the Hadley congregation to that service. And then, at 11:30 to approximately 12:30, depending on who attends, we thought we could have an hour of maybe some speeches. Again, the governor said that they also said that they would be delivering the citation, and so I'm sure that the select board and maybe if we have other select boards would want to say a few words during that hour.
Other select boards from the other town?
Yes, Deerfield is coming, yes, yes.
And Hatfield is older than Deerfield.
Yes.
I've been bragging about that. I wanted to put that out there. I think that would surprise a lot of people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, again, it's just going to be whatever anyone wants to say for that hour. Again, once we hear final confirmations from the elected officials, we'll actually create a schedule for that hour as to maybe a schedule of who's going to speak when. The last event for that day will be from 12:30 to 3:00 p.m., and it's just various events for guests who ever, who want to attend any of these activities. But we are going to open the Hatfield 325th Time Capsule at 1:00 p.m. that day. And then Jonathan Bardwell is going to give a presentation on the Congregational Church Bell. We are going to have refreshments, and it'll just be a period that we can all get together and talk, meet and greet. And that basically encompasses what we're planning for incorporation day.
That's a great. It's been an awful lot of planning and so thank you on behalf of the town, but very detail-oriented. So, thank you.
I like the historic touches, you know, because it's just really nice to have this one really particularly historic event. It's what it's all about.
Right. The big day. May I ask one question? And it might be in here, and I missed it. So, from the 11 -- so, the third event?
Yes.
Which are the speeches and the proclamation? Where is that taking place? Also at the church?
The, it starts off, what we're planning is Huntington Road in Hadley where the power lines will cross the river off of Bridge Lane.
Yep.
Okay? We plan to start it over in Hadley if everything goes right.
Right.
Okay? We're working with the power, we're getting, going to get in touch with the power company to start over there. There's a road that takes us down because that's where the original crossing took place. And from there, we'll go over to the Hatfield side and go down Bridge Lane, and that's where, I had already talked to Phil to see if they could clean a spot out. There's a concrete pad that brings you up from the river.
Right.
That gives the levels of the river, and if he can get that cleaned out, he says he would. So, that's what we're proposing to come up. But if the boat can't get up there when we go to take it out, we'll just have to either go by, possibly by George Adronix or maybe at one of the camps down there.
Okay. I was just curious where the actual speeches.
But I think you were asking about the speeches.
The speeches themselves.
Not the river crossing, but because then you go from there to the church. What happens?
The speeches will go, will take place after the ceremony at the church, on the side lawn of the church, by the library.
Like behind the library.
Yes.
We'll have it set up there.
Which is nice and shady and...
It is, it is. And in case of rain, we have a backup plan. We'll just move everything into the church, and I've talked to Reverend Randy about that.
Okay. We're also going to have a meet and greet. Did you go with that?
Yes, I went over to that, yes.
So, that's all set.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay. Also in your packet, last night, we had a meeting, and we confirmed the parade route.
This was with the parade committee?
The parade committee, that, and I did get a copy, and I don't know if John can see that or zoom in, so the people at home can see that also.
What's our orientation here?
The parade basically is going to start at the Legion, okay? And then, it's the gray line that goes from Legion to basically King Street or Swazowski's. That's the end of the parade, okay? All the other ones are color-coded. It starts off at the CNS parking lot. We got the okay to use the whole parking lot that day, so we can put up all the units and stuff like that there, and then some on the side street. You'll see that's Division 7 is over that way, and then Division 6 is down near, I'm not sure where, that's off of Elm Street here. And then, from there, it goes down around the corner by the old Hatfield Club, and then it continues down. All the colors are the divisions. So, Hatfield Division is going to be in 1 and 8, but there'll be Hatfield will lead off, and then there'll be, the floats go next, and then the Hadley group will come after that.
I don't see Division 1 and 8.
Pardon?
Division 1 and 8? Oh, I see it down here.
Yeah, 1 and 8.
Okay.
I just put Hatfield down there because I was just doing some notes. I had two meetings at 10:00 last night, so it was kind of quick. I just had to do that. But everything is already designed where the roads are going to be blocked off that day on Elm Street. It'll be only incoming traffic, okay? Because the parade route and parade people, what they will do is, let's say, one division that has blue, they'll have a plaque on their dash on their car when they come into town off of 91, and they'll just be directed to go down to the blue marker, and that's where their staging area is. So...
What about the public coming in? They can come in that way? So, people will be staged on one side of the road and...
Okay, the public will get in there before the parade naturally, so they're going to park wherever they can in town, okay? But what we have to designate is a parking area, because we talked about a parking area, and we also talked about shuttling, which has to take place. That hasn't been worked out yet, so go ahead.
But what if people try to come in closer to the parade?
They're not going to be able to come in. They'll have to come down Elm Street, I mean Chestnut Street or something like that. There'll be police on guard. Mike knows that, that, you know, he's only going to let certain people down. People that in town have to realize that this road's going to be shut down, so they have to make plans. It could be shut down for two to three hours. If we have a large parade and it's a beautiful day, it could go to four hours, depending on the situation, okay? So, we'll see what happens with that. Any questions on the map?
No.
No, I just want to say, for the benefit of people at home, because we're looking at this map and we're talking...
I put it up so they could see.
It's still probably a little hard for them to see. So, to be able to, if I understand this correctly, to be able to view the entire parade, you would want to be somewhere between the Legion and Swazowski Farms.
That's correct.
Right. So, if you are down on Elm Street, you may see part of the parade, but you're not going to see the whole parade because of the way it's staged. So, basically, from your house up to Swazies is where people want to set up, who want to actually watch it. And again, just to be clear, people coming into town are not going to be able to come in Elm Street because that's all going to be staging, so they're going to need to come in Chestnut Street or North Main Street and come down that way.
I'm not sure of the exact time yet, okay, when that street is going to be shut off to local traffic. Residents will still be able to get out to a certain point, okay? Because what we're trying to do is put all the divisions off to the side so there is a traffic lane coming down through, okay?
And the other thing, just to, so that residents are clear, the side streets that are off of Elm Street, including Prospect Street, will be closed down, so...
Right, okay.
Right.
That's correct.
Right.
The floats will be coming, some of the floats will be kept at CNS, and they'll come down Bridge Street and come in the back way over to Legion, okay? So, the floats will line up.
Right, they're going to drive all the way around and stage them this way.
And where the red line is, okay? And then, they'll be shuffled into the parade as they're lined up.
As they're lined up.
Sure. So, what is, what little, what street is this Divisions 1 and 8? Do you know? Is it like Scotland? It's, nothing's marked here for streets.
I think that's Scotland, Scotland Road right in that area.
Okay.
Okay?
So, the marching units, the, like, the school committee and the select board and the 350th committee will all be marching from there?
Okay, yeah. Division 1 and 8, I think, is Timmy Pachorek's area.
Oh, okay.
In that area.
Yep.
Okay? And then, then the Clydesdales, I was surprised they put them so far out because they wanted to get closer to the parade route, so that's why I was surprised at that. But I didn't ask about it because that was their...
I guess I'm kind of surprised they don't have people that are marching on foot just be at the bottom here of Prospect Street, right by the Legion, like where we line up for the Memorial Day Parade, and then you could have the Clydesdales down that other street.
Yeah, I just let, this is cut and stone. This is their all-plan. They checked with everybody.
Yep.
They talked about Budweiser horses coming in and also the, what's the other ones?
Hallmark.
Yeah, Hallmark, right. Okay, so that we might have two sets of horse teams coming in here with the Clydesdales.
It's going to be great.
Yep.
Some of the units that are coming in are really exciting, and it's really going to be a terrific big parade and a great celebration.
Yeah, right now, we have, I think there's around seven confirmations with bands and stuff like that. And I've got to call into Mike to find out about the mummers because that's probably one of the last ones that are in. But everybody else confirmed that they're going to be there. Hopkins Academy Band's going to be there as far as the school.
The Academy Band, of course.
That's good.
There was one other thing I was just thinking, it escaped me, but it's going to be very nice.
So, this will be really good. Today, I met with Mr. Nixon over in Hadley, he's the town administrator, and I gave him a package. Sheriff and I will be going there tomorrow to do the same presentation there and answer any questions that we have, because this is basically a joint venture. I mean, Hadley-Hatfield works. We're going to be working together, and they can do as little as much as they want with us. So, we're inviting them to come and join us.
I just thought of what I was going to mention, and that is that the float building workshop was last week, I think, and it was last week or the week before, and I wasn't able to make it, but it was very well-attended. So, I think there'll also be some nice floats for, you know, some of the people in town. If you sponsor at a certain level, it allows you to put a float in the parade, some of the businesses and things like that.
Yes.
I'm sure there's some town organizations and whatever that'll have floats in, so...
There was 30 to 35 people at that workshop, which was really nice.
That's really great.
Fair enough.
And I know one of the things, we did get Eddie Forman, that it will be playing in the parade, and also, he will be doing the summer celebration also.
That's really true.
So, that's good, yeah.
Yep. So, I assume is, we'll just get more and more updates as this gets closer because it's just really important for people to get all this information, particularly for the parade, you know, where they can park, how they can move.
Yes.
You know, there will be first aid stations, there's going to be some food trucks there, both for spectators but also for people that are participating in the parade.
That's correct.
There'll be porta-potties, all kinds of things. All of this is being talked about and organized, and it's a big undertaking, but it's coming into shape.
It's going to be really good. I mean, we have so many Santa cans for so many people.
Yep.
You know, I think the chief, I met with the chief...
There's a calculation, apparently.
I met with the chief police yesterday, Mike, and he said, "Well, how many people are you going to have?" I mean, we're anticipating about 10,000 people, okay? If it's a great day and there's more people coming in because of the parade, there could be up to 15. He says, "Well, I need to know 10 or 15." I says, "I can't give you that answer."
I've been surprised at people who've said to me, you know, even from out of town, that they can't wait, they're coming. So, I think we're going to have a big crowd and...
I just told Mike that, you know, be, come up with an alternate plan, because if there's 10,000 people and now you've got more, you really need to kick in the second plan and pull people in that, you know, put them on notice that we'll be pulling them in.
Right.
I guess I would just add that, you know, from being on the 350th with Sheriff and Ed, you know, the town departments have been really great in helping us with this, particularly the police chief and the fire chief, you know, because it's a big, it's a big undertaking and a lot for them to consider and plan, and we appreciate that, both as a committee and as a member of the select board and a towns person, so...
I did, you know, when I did meet with Mike and also the parade committee last night, I told them that I want to attend all their meetings from now until, and I even told the police chief and fire chief because there's homeland security involved and a lot of stuff that's going on behind the scenes that need to take place. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here.
It might even, what, do you mean the department head meetings? Because that might even be a good addition, to have somebody from the 350th at the department head meetings, just because it really is a coordination of efforts. Not just the parade, but the summer celebration, everything. We're going to require things from the DPW and so...
Right, okay. DPW is going to be a big thing, okay? On what, you know, Phil said, whatever we need, but also, we need to know, you know, how we need them and what we need to do, okay?
Well, even the building inspector, we're going to have staging, we're going to have, you know, so it's probably not a bad idea to make sure that there can always be someone.
Right.
It doesn't always have to be you, but somebody from the 350th going to those department head meetings, at least for the next...
Yes, it is, in the morning.
If I don't have an appointment, I certainly can't be there. You can let me know, put me on the list.
I'll let you know the dates.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you can't go, just reach out to somebody else on the 350th.
Sure.
I might be able to go. I'm sure there's other, Paul, yeah, whoever.
Oh, Abby might be able to go. Sheriff, you might be able to go. Somebody will be there.
But I do think that makes sense at this point because it is really getting to be crunch time, and it's probably something we should all be communicating about on a regular, yeah, it's, I know, it's here.
I just have one question for clarification, making sure I heard it right, but the floats, this is Prospect Street, right?
That's Prospect Street.
Prospect to Bridge.
Yeah.
Okay, that's where they're, because I thought you said, I thought you said the floats were Bridge Street, but I just wanted to clarify.
No, the floats are going to be, there's floats on that road, but we have to be careful because if there's too many floats, we have to put them in the CNS parking area, okay?
And then, they're going to move, Ed.
And then shuffle them down Bridge Street by your house.
And they'll come out on here and send a couple down.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And then, all the buses, as you can see, once the parade units are done, they'll be down by my house, which is on Lower Main Street, past King Street, and the vans will just come in and go right onto their buses in our town, they go.
But there will be things at Swazies, I think.
The floats.
Food stations, water, things like that for any marchers or anything that might need something like that.
They're even thinking about putting the food truck there. They have it all laid out where they want.
And I think there's going to be provisions for any first aid or anything like that at that last staging area.
There's going to be three first aid stations. There'll be one up towards CNS Way, another one by, somewhere by the Legion or on the corner here, and then another one down at the Swazies. The, the command post will be situated behind the town hall, so there'll be no parking in that area, okay? We will be looking at parking in the schools, the church, and that kind of thing.
Now, there's going to be a viewing area, right?
That's correct.
And so, who are you going to want on the viewing area?
That's, I have to talk with the parade committee to find out who. I know Paul Abbey will be up there.
Right, because he's announcing everything, yeah.
Probably his, his daughter's helping out, actually, both daughters are helping out because they need to communicate to make sure that when they go by the viewing stand, you're looking at Hatfield, you're looking at Hadley, okay, as they come down through. And that's, our spotters will let us know that everything's all right and everybody's in line. If somebody comes late, we're going to have to shuffle things around and change things, but there's people that take, you know, we'll take, take that into consideration and stuff. So, as far as other people on the, on the bandstand or the...
Reviewing stand.
Reviewing stand. Give me the sleppin', give me the sleppin' and their wives, that kind of stuff, okay? Dignitaries, if there's somebody after that goes through the parade and they come back in, they want to, they want to join us there.
And there'll be provisions to get people from the end of the route back to the viewing area?
Yes, we have gators to shuffle people back, and then we'll probably have a shuffle that we can shuffle them back in. We can come around from King Street and come back around to the fire station. Sure.
And the 325th, we hadn't made provisions for that. And, you know, I was co-chair of the 325th, so we marched, and we actually ended at King Street. So, we went even further down, and I don't know if anybody remembers that parade day, but it was so hot. It was so hot. It was just the worst. And we had no provisions to get back, so we all crammed in the back of an ambulance that had no air conditioning. I can't even tell you how many people were stuffed in the back of that ambulance.
Yeah.
It was, I was between Senator Rosenberg and over. It was quite toasty, so, yeah.
Right, yeah, right. So, we are looking, looking at shuffle and shuttle, you know, on bringing people back and so on. See what we have to do. We'll be in touch with management.
Yeah, because that way, if they, if they have the ride back, they don't miss as much of the parade as if they're trying to walk back.
Right, we want to get them back as quick as we can.
Because you're going to be talking everybody on the way back, if you're me.
I was going to say that.
Yeah, we'll have gators.
And you.
Small gators that we're going to have, you know, if somebody needs to get shuffled right away, we can personally just get them there by gator.
I think the point is that for townspeople to know that there's a lot of moving pieces here and a lot of details that have to be thought of, and it's, there's a reason we've been working on this for three years.
Yeah, exactly. And I'd just like to thank our committee. I mean, everybody is doing a fabulous job and a great job, and I really appreciate that very much. Makes my job much easier, along with Lori and everybody else that's working in the committee.
Well, and the parade is Michael Poshak and Paul Abbey are really taking the lead on that.
That's right.
But a huge thank you to Jim and Brenda Ryan from North Hampton, who are just the local parade experts and have, it's been a huge difference having them step in and sort of advise and counsel us on, on an endeavor this big, because for the 325th, we had Bob Donaldson. Remember Bob Donaldson? And he was great at running parades and so...
One thing that we will need from the public is people that want to donate their time, okay? We're looking for volunteers, a lot of volunteers. We're looking for probably around 60 volunteers for parking cars to monitoring, to being with some of the groups just in case something's going on. So we're looking, looking at quite a few volunteers. So anyone out there in the town wants to volunteer, out of town, we have people that are out of town that want to volunteer. Also, please get in touch with myself or Diana or Stephanie Slish. Go online, okay?
You could call the town hall and get any of those members.
Sure, and give your name and we'll be happy to get in touch with you for this, for this event. We're gonna need a lot of volunteers for the parade, like I say. We'll be looking for probably 60 people, if not more.
I would say so. And they'll all get a spiffy t-shirt, right? We're ordering t-shirts for all the volunteers.
Yes, and they're gonna be, from what Paul was saying, they're gonna be color-coded. So everybody that's in their role, okay, where you say, you know, go, go to that person in a red, okay, he'll take care of you, okay? That's the kind of thing that we want to have. So it'll all be color-coded and we'll go from there. And with that, the only thing I have left is the town report, okay? I talked with them a little bit today and the key. And also, we talked about the town report and I think Marley and I talked with you a little bit about it too.
We talked about it several weeks ago also.
What we're looking for this year is probably something to on the front page with the 350th and also maybe two pages in between, you know, after that. But we want to get the word out, we want to, I know it's, we started it in 2019 and that's when the report is for. Our gala was in, in 2019. It was a great success. I think everybody attended, it was fabulous, had a great time. Thanks to Diana and Anna, they did a fabulous job. But anyway, getting back to the town report, we'd like to at least have a couple of pages in there to let the people know what we're doing. Also, it's gonna be, you know, something that's gonna be here forever and it'll be on the front page. But that's up to you guys on how you want to do it.
We can, either, we can certainly discuss it. I don't, I don't foresee an issue with that, personally, but.
Personally, I think that we should have a couple of pages in this one and a couple of pages in next year.
That's what I mentioned to Ed.
Because so many, so many events and so many other things happen after this one's published.
That's what Ed and I were talking about, yeah.
So, I mean, this, you know, a town report is, is the record, right?
Correct.
It's the record of that, it's that annual town report. And I think it's really important to make sure that we put an accurate record in of the 350th activities and people who worked on all of it and everything like that. It really is important that that be in there, so.
I would agree.
I'll advocate for that strongly.
Thank you.
How are you guys doing for money?
We're doing really good, okay? We, I think we're up to somewhere around 180,000 at this point. We did get a grant from the state for $10,000. We just got our first allotment for 5,000 from them, which we'll be using five for the gala and then five for one of the parade units, okay? It's a grant, so we didn't want to, we wanted it as simple as possible to get it in, get it back out. So that's what we chose to use the grant for on that, so. But we're doing really good.
And we should acknowledge Senator Comerford is who really helped us get that grant.
Yes.
And it's through the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism.
You know, we thank everybody. I mean, you were a big asset in that also, so I thank you. We will, that's about, I don't know if you have anything else?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
I think that was a great update. And I just wanted to again, thank you, and all the members that are part of this.
We're not quite there yet, but we're, I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, you know, it's, it's here though.
We kind of are. I mean, you know, we really have the two huge events. One's behind us. The parade is, is coming up. The incorporation day, though probably the most important event, is a little bit smaller in size and scope, but, you know, we're, I think we're in very good shape. The summer celebration is shaping up nicely. We're talking about folding in the bonfire, the fireworks for the finale. Next year's luminaryum are set, so we're really...
We'll give another report before the parade. We'll probably have probably three or four more meetings before the parade, but we can update you just before the parade.
Maybe if it fits within your schedule, I would, before the parade, but probably before incorporation day too, you know, as a reminder. I mean, we can, we know we have tons of website and we can announce it, but it's nice having the conversation with members of the committee to come and talk right to it.
I should have confirmation by, from everyone by the end of March, whether or not they're gonna be attending.
Well, maybe mid to late April, because that'll still give us five or six weeks until the end of May, or whatever you guys see fit. I was just thinking.
I do want to add one thing. Cher has done a fabulous job putting the charter together and everything that we have from Boston and all the work that she's done in that. Done a fabulous job. She's actually taking and rewritten, so you can legibly read.
Read this. Wow, wow.
I got a eye doctor appointment coming up.
These, these are some of the, I'll have some of the original petitions and also this is the official proclamation. These will be actually displayed in the church parlor for incorporation day meet and greet.
Cool. You'll see where the Declaration of Independence got there.
And I believe the whole town appreciates all the work you guys have put into this over the last couple of years.
I think that there's a lot of excitement. I mean, people talk to me about it a lot. You know, we have people from Framingham coming in for the parade and, you know, so it's really, it's not just here. It's...
I'd like to add.
Who aren't from town, by the way.
Yeah, that's great to hear. The calendars were, there was an issue with the calendars. Everybody in town, every household was supposed to get a calendar in town. Something happened in the mail when they brought the calendars to town. They didn't get distributed properly, so people didn't get it. And we apologize for that. So having to look into it, there's some issues with, with the postal and that kind of stuff that we're looking into to see.
Right, I think it probably was an issue with the, we did a bulk mailing, so there must have been some.
Where it should have gone to the households, not individual names, because if the names weren't there, they didn't deliver the mail. So, you know, there's some other things that were going on too. So, anyone that didn't get a calendar, please come to the town hall. They're in the town hall here, or see a member of us on the committee and we'll get calendars to you, okay? But we thank you for your patience and we apologize for any mix-up, okay? With that, I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ed, thanks Cher. Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Very good.
Okay.
It's gonna feel really boring around here in 2021. All this excitement. Well, yeah, exactly.
I should look forward to a bit of rest.
It will be nice, that'll be nice.
Is the housing authority here?
I have seen them out in the hallway.
All right, thank you very much. So with us currently, we have members of the Hatfield Housing Authority, and we're gonna get a presentation, this will be the second, maybe even the third, thank you, Mike, overview or presentation that we've had on the proposed parking lot changes next door over at Kapewalk. So I'll turn it over to Brenna, the director, and Mike McGrath's here from the Housing Authority as well to sort of kick this off for.
No other housing authority members are coming?
John is sick.
Yeah, he's under the weather, unfortunately, Ted.
John is sick.
More than two of you, right?
Hmm?
Yeah, yeah.
Couldn't be, okay?
Sorry.
Oh, that's, okay, it's okay. So you're on camera now, Brenna.
Right, well, so we're, we're back to speak about the revisions that we talked about last time. So this is Dan Boulay from Ty and Bond, and he is back with us to go over the changes that he made, some of which are including the green space area, some extra benches, and also the crosswalk signs, the flashing ones that were asked about, okay?
Yep, thank you. And John, if I could. So to Brenna's point, and we appreciate Dan coming back, at the last presentation, we, the board, had asked for just some clarification and some modifications, if possible, for some green space and, as you mentioned, the crosswalks and to make it safe for residents of Hatfield to go back and forth. So that's pretty much, this isn't a total redo, but it's more of a revision to the proposal that was made to the Board of Selectmen previously.
And I thought we had suggested those, those new spaces, pulling those in a little closer, okay, to make better turning radiuses, okay?
Perfect, okay. I just wanted to follow up on that, so. So I guess we'll leave it to you, Dan, is that?
So again, my name's Dan Boulay. I'm a project manager with Ty and Bond. The project has kind of evolved and gotten to the point now with several different opinions and comments and suggestions. So ultimately, the focus of the project was to provide as much additional parking as possible to the residents of the Housing Authority. Based on the limits of the parking, the property line, and the proximity of the buildings, really the only open space that we could achieve was in the green space that's directly in front of the existing parking lot. So what we've done is we've proposed to get six new parking spaces by taking land from the green space in front of the actual parking space that's there now. So this is the larger parking. We have existing parking here on the outside, on both sides, and we're proposing six parking spaces kind of in the middle, so three on either side. The last time we met, there was discussion about how do people physically make the turn off of, and get into the parking. It is kind of an odd way to get in, but it was suggested maybe we open up this throat and provide more turning radius for people to either come in or back in and make this movement area bigger for residents to really get in there. So that's what we've done. We've essentially made, we've pulled this together, either wing, and reduced the green space between either side. It was commented that maybe pull it as close as you can and provide as much space as you can with still some of the other features that are kind of impinging on us. So one of the biggest items is there's an existing utility pool right here. We couldn't get any closer than what we feel comfortable. We're five feet away from that pool with this side of the parking lot. So in doing so, we now have a throat opening on either side of 26 feet to allow for turning to get in and out both on either side, the existing and the new parking space. In addition to that, there was concern about, we need to cut down a tree that's in the center there. The shade provides residents, that was talked about at length, can we provide new benches somewhere on site under a shaded spot that residents could use? So we found over here on the edge of the parking, I mean, edge of the parcel, there's a tree here. So we've opted to show new, two new benches right up against the sidewalk that's existing there. So in total, we have two here, and then the two that are existing would be removed and reset in the similar location.
If I may interrupt, sure, about the tree, DHCD has also recommended a fund where if we have to remove a tree anywhere in the state, we will fund a new tree. So that's another option that we could, we could look into, to losing one tree and having funding for another tree. Thank you.
Another suggestion that I think that we were able to kind of work through was showing a sidewalk up until the limits of the parking here, so residents could, you know, come back around and then actually access the park benches without going over a curb and then to grass.
Right, and then if you, when you're getting in and out of your car, you could use that parking lot or the sidewalk between the spaces instead of having to walk behind cars.
Correct, yeah, yeah. And then lastly, it was suggested that the rectangular rapid flashers be installed on either side of the crosswalk. So those are being shown as well. Kind of difficult to see the symbol, but there's one here, and then we have one on the other side as well.
And those are just activated, pedestrian-activated?
Yep, those are solar-powered, pedestrian-activated. If you're on one side, it's a radio transmitter that activates the other ones, so they're both going on at the same time.
Okay, but only when they're being used?
Only when they're being used, yes. They have to be activated to turn on.
And if I recall, Roland, it was when we were talking about the benches, because I know you enjoy the benches out front, you were okay with moving the benches over a little bit, because it would still give you some shade and a nice place to...
Over in a corner of Main and Scho Street under that tree there.
Yeah, so you'd still be able to enjoy sitting out on a nice day.
Yeah, so we've got those two benches in addition to the other two that are gonna be located there as well.
And this increases the turning radius, obviously for, for regular vehicles and people who reside there, but that also helps a little bit with our emergency vehicles?
Certainly, yeah. And that's another point we talked about at the last meeting, but part of the project that we had shown before was the access to the main parking area. We've increased that now to 24 feet. The orange, I should go back up a little bit, the orange is the existing limits of paving now. The blue is going to be the proposed new limit. So you can see that we bumped that out, you know, several feet on both sides to get that opening up as well. So not only is the turning into the first parking area larger, but to the major parking area where the buildings would be, has increased to 24 feet as well.
That's great, thank you, because I know that was something that at the time Chief Gawn had concerns for not only ambulances, but should they need to get a truck in there, you know?
Correct, yeah.
So, so thanks.
Well, it seems like this plan addresses all of the concerns in the most efficient possible way.
Yeah, and I guess I just want to step back, we were talking...
Move the pole or anything like that?
Yeah, moving the pole, it's time and money, extensive amount of times, and then someone have to pay obviously the utility to do that, so. And we thought it was a safe enough distance to keep it at five feet away, so. One of the things that we were talking about before as kind of a group was the request for the flashers. That obviously wasn't included in the original budget when everybody undertook the plan to expand the parking, so I guess we wanted to just talk through, funding-wise, if the authority is not able to come up with that, what's the board's feeling on that? I'm sure others would want to probably chime in on that.
I guess I'd like to just maybe revisit the whole funding piece for this, so that, just to remind townspeople too, there's a grant available if you wanted to speak to that.
It's funded through DHCD, through the taxpayer. So if, if it's not a town requirement, if you don't have other signs that are flashing, the added cost might hinder the project. I can bring it to Boston and say, if it is a town ordinance to have flashing lights, I don't know if that's so.
Can be.
Well...
Can be.
True.
Will be tomorrow.
A couple of ways to deal with this.
Do it.
And first to get it approved at DHCD. If it's a funding issue, then what we would do is add it as an alternate, so that if the bids came in low enough, that would be alternate number one.
So just to, just again, for people at home who might not understand, DHCD is Department of Housing and Community Development, it's a state agency, and when you talk about taxpayer-funded, it's state money.
That's right.
It's not town money, it's state money. It would come in to do all of this project, maybe with the exception of the flashers. Do we have some kind of estimate on what we're talking about for the cost of the flashers?
Yeah, installed costs, we've been seeing typically around the $10,000 to $12,000 apiece.
And there's two of them?
So.
Okay.
So as, what I'm asking is, would it be okay if that's how we approached it?
I would say yes. I mean, the crosswalk's gonna be there regardless, right? So that, and that's the key.
The crosswalk and the improvements to the...
To that area on both sides, right.
So are you moving closer to any streetlights or further away from a streetlight? It's actually further away.
It's further away from a streetlight.
So it's a health and safety issue. I would push it in Boston. I would do my best.
Yeah.
But I can't, we'd like to have it started in the spring or after the 250.
350.
300, congratulations, 300 anniversary.
Right after the parade.
Right after the parade, we'll be right in there. So as it stands now, I can't say what the funding looks like or what the bids will come in. If DHCD says it's not a practical thing at this point because of the cost, we might do it as an alternate, wait for the bids to come in, see where they come in. And that would get added if the bids were low enough.
I believe, I think that that's fair. Certainly, we...
We can't hold up this whole project for this?
Exactly. That was my point, which I was just gonna say. And we appreciate the efforts to try to build it in or do it as an alternate, should the bids be less than Dan anticipated.
And if it doesn't be, if the project goes forward without including them, I personally would favor trying to find a way for the town to fund that in a, in...
Right, I would agree.
Very soon after this project is complete, because I think it's an important piece. You know, most of, we're doing this all in the name of safety.
Safety.
And so to not take it right over the finish line.
Yeah, I agree, 100%.
And, and it's not, you know, the residents there, of course, that's who we're concerned about, but there's also, you know, kids from school walk down there, the park is right there, kids are playing basketball, moving back and forth across the street. So there's plenty of good reasons to make sure that there's safe crosswalks there.
No vendors near in Boston.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Right, do we need to...
Well, do you, Ed, do you have any particular questions on it?
I want to thank you for listening to what everybody said and incorporated in your plan, because everything in your plan is what's been said. I know this has been an ongoing issue for years of trying to resolve some parking, and this seems like finally, maybe, we have something in place.
And, well, and I want to, Roland shaking his head back there, but I did want to thank you guys for coming, and I know that it's, it means a change in, you know, partly how you've enjoyed that property and where you've been able to sit and visit, you know, with your neighbors. But I think that this plan both allows us to increase parking, increase safety, and still give you, you know, a nice spot where you can still visit and enjoy the outdoors. It's a change, but I don't think it's something that's gonna really not allow you to enjoy the property.
I would agree with both Ed and Diana, and I guess I would also, on top of that, say, and sometimes as housing authorities, as select boards, as towns, you know, you have to, you have to seize the moment. the moment when there's an opportunity to...
Funding source.
For a funding source that isn't out of the town budget or out of the local budget, so it just all kind of came together. And again, Dan, thank you for tweaking that.
And it'll also coincide with, you know, the improvements here at Smith Academy Park.
Downtown, absolutely.
And for the residents that are able to walk across the street, there's going to be some nice space for them there, too, to enjoy being outside. So there's still going to be a lot of options to enjoy the outside and visit with each other in the shade or in the sun or wherever you want to be.
Yeah.
Great.
So we're going to move two trees and a capewong sign, right, to, out of those spaces?
Yeah, so the sign will be moved and then reset, so the sign location will be right here.
Yeah, it's still relatively the same area.
Because that's a newer sign, I think, that's done.
Yeah.
Does anybody in the public have any other comments or questions that they wanted to ask while we have Dan and...
The only concern I have is where's the snow going to go? I mean, the plow has a hard enough time now to plow in those three spots on the side that are already open. He can't swing in there with his big plow and get it clear enough. A lot of times, there's still ice and snow left on the ground, or I have to park there, but I have a pretty decent side, but the one closest to the sidewalk, he can't get in there and get it close enough where the other car can get in. There's always snow or ice stuck in there.
I mean, the parking lot size itself will increase, so perhaps he'll have an easier time.
Let's hope so.
Yeah, you know, just like residents should have...
Because we had a mile waiting to this year, thank God.
I know, but just like residents should have an easier time maneuvering and emergency vehicles, I would hope that...
I don't have any trouble, because I'm on that corner, so I can just back right up that way, but...
It is an issue, but I hope that the bigger parking lot will be getting easier.
And right until when the six new spaces, will that bring all our vehicles over there?
Almost, but no. We'll have probably one or two that are still, yeah. Yeah, but almost.
That's better than standard to whoever we are.
You know, the presidency is always changing, vehicles come and go, so at some point, maybe we will have the mom over there.
We have some where they start getting older, they might stop driving. Soon, not me, but soon. I mean, I'm not ready to...
It's progress, it's progress. It's really a great step in the right direction and a project that's funded, you know, by a great source through the state, so this is a great opportunity.
Okay, so any other questions or comments? Okay, so you're looking for approval from the Board of Selectmen to move forward?
I will make a motion that we vote to approve this design.
Preliminary design.
Preliminary design.
conceptual design.
As presented tonight. Is that enough?
For the capewong parking lot?
For the capewong park. With the lights put in as an option, a contingency.
Bit alternate.
Yeah, bit alternate.
Good. Okay, so a motion's been made?
It's seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion from the board?
Just again, the lights or something, we'll have to figure out. I don't know.
Maybe they'll be part of the, maybe they'll be part of the project, and if not, we'll...
I should be able to let Brennan, Dan know tomorrow afternoon.
I'm in Boston in the office tomorrow.
Plus, they're solar, so they're not like you need to pipe anything out to them, they can always replace them.
But I mean, even if tomorrow you find out that they think it's expensive, depending on what the bids came in, it's still not off the table.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Nope, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roland.
It's going to be good, guys.
It's going to be good. It'll be a little adjustment, but it'll be, it'll be good.
And I appreciate your time.
You're welcome, thanks, we appreciate everyone's efforts.
One more.
Okay. So we're going to continue with our agenda. So, so we have, we have an abatement on our, on our agenda to look into now. It was an abatement brought forward by a resident to the DPW director, who in his opinion warrants the abatement because of a misreading of the, of the meter itself. So that's in here, it's for, the address is 26 North Street in Hatfield.
I make a motion that we grant this, the abatement for Cynthia Buchanan and Larry Swine? I'm not sure how you pronounce that.
Swine?
Swine?
For 26 North Street.
26 North Street.
I'm not sure how to pronounce it either.
I'll second that, because based on the DPW recommendation of the misread meter.
Right, okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion from the board?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So we'll let Phil know, who will let the front office know, right? That's the process?
And there should be communication to the owner as well.
Right, perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, Marlene, we're to the Town Administrator Report.
An FY19 financial update. Myself and representatives from Melonson Heath had a conference call last week with Justin Cole, and Melonson Heath established a share file, so Justin is completing documents. He was doing some research, you know, and making some adjustments, and he is uploading those files. He should have everything completed for 19, what he's doing.
Right, his portion of it.
And submitted to Melonson Heath tomorrow. Our new accountant will be here on Thursday to attend the department head meeting and a chance for department heads to meet the accountant or all the staff in here.
Right. And... I'm sorry, could I interrupt? Or interject, I should say, so really, so when we talk about the accountant though, it's the accountant that works for Melonson Heath.
Correct, correct.
I guess I didn't, I wanted to make sure there wasn't any confusion.
New accountant, Lori.
The assigned accountant to our...
Leo.
Yeah, right. Right, you know, we were talking about a firm and then a person, so I just want, we were on board, I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that we are, Melonson Heath has been contracted with to be our accountant. Right, oh, so that's good, so she'll be here on Thursday?
Thursday.
Great.
And so as we know that they, Melonson Heath will, will finish the closeout of FY19.
Yep, great.
So that, move on to continued old business. Copies of the budgets are being made. Currently, today started making copies for the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen. Finance Committee had received copies of some budgets that had been submitted a couple weeks ago. So the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee will meet next Tuesday, which will be our first budget session with departments. The annual town meeting warrant continues to take shape. I don't know if you have a copy of your capital plan with you? Did you, does the board, would the board like to have some discussion regarding what was submitted by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee? I know there will continue to be discussion, you know, regarding capital items going forward and even conversations with the Finance Committee. The last meeting, you had just received it, we didn't review it that evening.
Right, I, personally, I did not bring it, so...
I mean, I think it makes sense to review it when everybody's together.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I mean, I was on the capital planning, so I...
Mm-hmm. But, okay. Okay, so I just, I just didn't know if you wanted to have, you know, some, I don't know, initial discussion about the projects that have been put forward by the committee, but anyway.
Well, we're meeting next, we start Tuesday, right?
Yes.
So...
Yeah, and it may be, you know, a discussion that really needs to happen a little later on, once we have a better idea of where, where we are with free cash.
Right.
Because typically, free cash funds the capital.
Does the, does the capital projects for the most part, or for the majority of them. So we have our own, yeah, I think, I think next week is probably fine, and maybe we can all do a little bit of homework ahead, well, Diana was on that committee, but just, you know, Ed and I can just review them once again, kind of on our own, and we'll just see if something really just kind of, you know, if there's one of those items that you kind of go, wow, we really need one of those for X number of dollars type thing. And then we'll make sure to concentrate on that while we meet with the Finance Committee, so if that's, if that's agreeable.
Yeah, that works.
And that's agreeable with you guys. Okay.
I mean, from the, from the capital planning committee's standpoint, I mean, we, you know, obviously focused on projects, some of which would have grant money to offset them, making now the time to do them, you know, others are maybe safety issues or will just continue to get more and more expensive if we keep kicking the can down the road and whatnot, so. But I think it's, it makes sense to have the discussion as a whole with the Finance Committee and the financial team.
Right, and that way, we've gone through everything and then can, as the different departments come in, we will have already discussed it with, amongst ourselves and with the Finance Committee, so we'll have our questions lined up for, as the department heads come in.
Sure.
Okay.
There's even one item on here that's, the funding source is listed as the Booster Club, which I'm proud to say, as president of the Booster Club, we've made a commitment to build the dugouts, the softball dugouts for Smith Academy. They're going to be really nice, so that'll be a project that'll be completely done through the Booster Club, so.
That's awesome, thank you.
Kind of came off of this plan.
I am recommending a budget software program, and so it would eliminate that Excel workbook, you know, spreadsheets that we've been using for, my God, that's antiquated. So it's a very sophisticated, it's designed for municipal budgeting, and it also forecasts, gives you the ability to forecast. I am applying for a grant for the first year's cost, which is $11,000. After year one, there would just be annual, the annual cost, I think of, might be around $3,000, but the $11,000 encompasses everything.
There was some talk in the capital planning about how some of those software things, whether it be for the school, like they update their Chromebooks and that sort of thing, that those really should be part of operating budgets.
Budgets, right.
And that we really need to make the switch to fund the operating budgets at a level that can just fund these ongoing software.
That is true.
It's just the way that the world operates now.
That is true.
And we, you know, it's not just a matter of buying hardware like it used to be. I mean, we're all using, as you said, more sophisticated programs and things that need, you know, constant updates and upgrades, and it really should just be built into budgets.
Budgets, absolutely, it should be.
And I would agree, and I think, I think in the past, though, you know, we sort of have tried that, but because of just budget constraints.
Right.
But we really do need to have that in there, because we, every year, every department shouldn't have to come back every year for, some of these things are like $500 or $1,000. I mean, there, there should be, you know, depending on the department, they for sure should have some sort of software.
Well, and then there's, there's some that are like a three-year, you know, and then you don't, what you don't want is also to have it built into the budget when the expense doesn't exist anymore.
Right, so, yeah.
You have to kind of stay on top of it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But there was some discussion about how it's really a capital item.
It is initially.
It's gray area.
You're right.
Yeah.
So, okay, moving on, Town Hall building renovations update. Wish we could say we're almost done, but we're not.
Someday this won't be on the agenda.
Yeah, that's right, someday.
Someday.
But actually, they are, they, you know, it's, it's coming to an end. It's coming to an end, so the elevator is, elevator installation is complete. This Friday, the alarm system is going to be tested, so I have advised all employees to, you know, not be on site here, the building should be unoccupied, it's going to be very loud, and it's going to be an event that pretty much takes up a good part of the day.
I would say multiple, multiple tests to make sure every, the way it's supposed to work going forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
So now, you know, they're redoing some floors, doing finishing touches, all the pipes. I believe the pipes are all done up over, you know, the attic section, the front of the building, the pipes are complete there, with the exception of the vaults, so they are going to, that's scheduled work between next week, this week and next week. There is a change order, number four, for $27,727.83. This, we had, I believe we had talked about this at a previous meeting, updating some things that they had found, so there was a cluster of wiring that was, they uncovered that didn't, didn't see that.
Yeah, I mean, if you go through these real quick, I'll go through them one more time. The wiring was not code compliant, it had to be corrected. The office 105, that was the change because of the way the configuration of the office was, and we had that space.
Behind the elevator.
The room 203, it just made sense to, the wallpaper was peeling off, it made sense to do that now, because the price was a good price. The AC box was another code issue that had to be relocated. The basement, we actually got a credit for. The Ray's new landing, we're still in discussion on that, but it's something that's going to make the design, the design as it is outside where the steps are, the design will work, but it, it won't work as well as doing it correctly, I guess. I'm trying to say how to...
The drainage.
I mean, it will drain, but the concern isn't in the wintertime, there may be ice building up the way the drainage is set up, and everybody concerned feels that this change will make it better. So there's been a discussion on who's paying for this, and it looks like we're going to probably get stuck with this if, if we want to go with it, but we're still, we're still debating this the way they have it.
Yeah.
And to make it, to make it correct, to make it better, to make sure that the water drains correctly, it should be done. And the last thing is the kitchen sink, that was a plumbing inspector code violation. He wanted some changes, and, and we went back and forth with this sink a few times, and unfortunately, it just cost, I mean, the other issues on this project was when we started, the elevator required to have an MDC trap, and what that means is, outside is a big concrete containment area that if for any reason the elevator leaked, or hydraulic fluid, or the sprinkler went off and a pit filled, there's a pump set up to pump that into a storage space with an alarm. That was, that was almost an extra 47 grand, that was a code issue. And then when they dug up the floor downstairs, the other issue was all the pipe, the sewer pipe was all cracked and broken, we had to, we had to replace it, we had no choice, so these are things we find in renovations.
But that's not on this list, that was previous.
That was a previous change order, the sewer pipe.
So can we just talk about the kitchen sink, because it's $9,400?
Yeah, I know, this is...
And I question that as well.
A $9,000 sink.
So it has to be handicap accessible.
Right.
They also had to install a new garbage disposal, so there is an existing garbage disposal with a three-tier sink. That is not handicap accessible, that's not code compliant. So they cut into the counter, they're installing some drawers, a new garbage disposal, and in the sink, to make that handicap accessible.
It still seems like $9,000 is unbelievably expensive.
I had a discussion with the architect, and I, I told him that I thought that was a bit pricey.
We all thought it was a bit pricey for what they're, what they're saying, so we're still, I think we still deserve an answer from the architect on why it's $9,000.
That's...
Yeah, the detail, the details. They give you a line item for that particular project, but I think we should see... They give you a, a line item for that particular project, but I think we should see the detail.
Well, I'm with you. I'm with these guys, because that, that was the thing that stood out to me the most, was, was a third of this additional cost is... And it's the way it's worded, kitchen sink.
Yeah.
Well, it's gotta be more, it's gotta be more to it than that, so just tell us what it is. I mean, that's all.
And itemize it.
And we all had concerns about, you know, the building inspector, DPW director, about the grading outside and, and the, the ramp there.
Right. Well, you know, we, we want to get it right the first time. I mean...
In terms of the ramp, I mean, so, so much of this project has focused on safety
Yes.
and making this building, you know, safe for people coming in and out, particularly anyone coming to the council on aging, that at the last, you know, here in these last few, you know, bits of this project, to leave something that's gonna be icy, it would be silly. That just doesn't make any sense. But a $9,000 sink install, I would like a little more detail on.
Yeah, I had, when I first saw that, I reached out to Ed and I said, Ed, Hello. this looks a little high to me.
I think, I think the architect can give us a detailed listing of why it's $9,000.
Yeah.
They should be able to send to us a breakdown of the cost on the $9,000.
Right.
There's probably, I'm assuming there's plumbing, electrical
Labor, yeah, yeah, yeah. I would agree.
and some other stuff involved.
But it would be nice to know.
But let's see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see it. That's all.
We don't want another bill for those items on top of this, right? It's $9,000 and it includes whatever. Give us a list.
Or just why it's $9,000.
Yeah.
I think at this point, we just don't approve that until they show us why, why it's $9,000.
Agreed.
We can get that information from them before the board decides to approve this. Okay. Do that.
Yeah, once the fire alarm is tested and tied in with the elevator, then a, then the state inspector will be able to come out and do the elevator inspection, so it's all, it's all set to go once those...
We should all, we should take a ride on it, the board.
You first.
There is, the elevator will be...
I'm sure it's great.
The elevator will, will be equipped with a telephone. Contractor led us to believe that it's just a matter of connecting it to, to a wire, to a location. We reached out to our...
Normando.
Normando Technology is, you know, they're familiar with the phone system in here, and so there was some back and forth between, you know, Normando and, and the contractor, and I don't think the contractor had a, a full understanding of what needed to be done. In the end, Normando talked to the building inspector, and it has to be a dedicated line.
Right.
So we are now ordering a dedicated line from Verizon for that phone.
And it's in there for emergency purposes, that's what it is.
Correct. Correct.
Why not just an alarm? I mean, most elevators just have that alarm button.
State code.
Well, you're in elevators all the time. It doesn't have telephones in.
Maybe municipal. I mean, I have no idea. You know, I don't know if that's different, Diana.
Just curious.
So the good news is...
Should be an alarm button, the handphone.
So, so the good news potentially is, it doesn't need to be part of our centric system. It doesn't need to be part of our phone system. It should just be a seven-digit like you'd have at your house.
That's what we were talking about today. We don't need to dial nine.
Business line. Don't have to dial a nine. You pick it up and call seven digits.
Correct.
Or you should only ever need to call three digits from there.
So, you know, as I was saying...
But then it's gotta be part of the phone system.
Why? To call 911 from there?
Well, you don't need to call 911 from there. Well, you could.
Well, who else are you gonna call from an elevator?
Well, you, well, you, you could call the office. Not every call from that elevator is potentially going to 911. Right? If it stops, are you gonna call 911?
I can't see a reason to use a phone in an elevator unless it's 911.
For an emergency, that it would go to 911.
Well, that's fine. It's still gonna be a seven-digit phone number. I mean, you know, we can call Diana at home.
All you do is...
Say, I'm on the elevator.
All you do is hope when you, if you have to use the phone, you don't get an answering machine. That's all I mean.
I just...
No, no.
I just have never seen that in an elevator.
You know, clearly, the, the contractor thought it was just a magic, matter of just
Connecting something.
connecting a wire. I don't think they, they realize or, or understood the, what needs to be done. So they wanted this completed by this Friday. That's not going to happen.
I, I believe that the elevator company should be the ones to tell us what needs to be in that, not the, not the contractor per se, right?
That's actually, yeah.
Why don't we reach out to the elevator company?
Why the phone is in it? It is some new code. In other words, new installations require a phone.
Instead of hitting a red button and the bell goes off and somebody knows.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would imagine that the elevator company does, this is their business, so they would know for sure what's necessary.
Particularly when most people have phones on them all the time.
Right.
If you're stuck, the first people to respond will be probably the fire department.
Right. Okay. That would be my suggestion, Marlene. Reach out to, I don't know, is it Otis? Are they still the only elevator company around here? Whoever it is, it doesn't matter.
Hopefully, nobody gets...
But they'll know.
Gets stuck in there.
I can't think of the elevator company off the top of my head, but we have that information. We can get that information.
I'll tell you what, you could also ask the superintendent what they have in the schools. Of course, the law, the rules and laws and regulations may have changed since the elementary school was built, but there's an elevator.
There's no phone in there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think I've seen a phone in there.
So let's see what the deal is.
Okay.
I mean, this isn't like it's a 50-story building, right? I mean...
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. It's a...
Yeah, you're up or down.
It just doesn't make sense to me
But...
why we have that.
But, you know, with the rules that are, you know, regulations that are regulations.
If it's a, if it's a regulation, it's a regulation, but if not...
That's right. If it's...
I say get the project done before the rules and regulations change again.
Again, right. All right, so we're gonna hold off on taking action on that particular...
Okay.
Right?
Till we get a breakdown of...
Till we get a breakdown of it. Okay.
$9,000 was.
All right.
And, yeah.
Anything else as far as Town Hall goes? Ed or Marlene?
No, we just have some other questions on...
So we received a letter, which I just put, put down in front of you earlier before the meeting, from the architect. So they're, they're looking, they're looking at, at this project being pushed out to, to May 31st, from March 31st to May 31st. And they're proposing that they reduce the hours of construction administration services currently, well, according to the architect, they're putting in 16 hours a week right now.
Well, this is, this is a question we have.
Well, that was, we were sort of at the height of construction, right? So it should trail off.
Yes.
I just sent, I pulled out the contract tonight, and I sent it to Marlene to review, because the wordage in the contract is a little bit different than what we're hearing, so we're, we're, Marlene's actually fong up some concerns on this right now, to see...
I pulled out the contract today, and, but I did want to make, make the board aware
Yeah, thank you.
of this.
All right.
So I told, I, my response to Architectural EL is that this would be reviewed with the Board of Selectmen.
Right, now we need some more answers before we can respond to this, so we're, we're looking into a couple of things.
We're a holding pattern on this one as well, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whoops.
Okay. Thank you for the heads up, though.
It's a holding pattern, definitely.
Okay. Anything else from a renovation perspective, Town Hall renovations? Anything else?
No, no, I just, the regular, you know, little renovation battles you have and trying to...
Well, once again, we thank you at every meeting, but...
I know, Ed, really, and Marlene.
Thank you again, Ed, your, your background and expertise, and Marlene, you as well. I know you guys are a lot of meetings.
And I keep mentioning the employees who are being patient and
Yeah.
understanding, and we know it hasn't been easy.
We're getting there.
Getting there.
Yeah, the biggest part is the piping. The, this whole project, the biggest part was the elevator and the piping, so. I mean, as far as the ramp, they're talking March 11th to, to move ahead and get the ramp completed, and then starting to back here, so.
Outback. Good.
That'll be good.
I mean, clearly, there have been some inconveniences to the departments, the staff, and, you know, the ideal situation would have been if the, the building was vacated, you know, but we weren't in a position to relocate all the offices.
And how are our...
Everybody's back in, though, right?
Oh, I, right, yes. No, everybody is back in.
How about our friends with the COA? Everything's still going well over at the church?
Yes.
I mean, Jerry's happy, and the COA directors are...
It worked out well.
It's worked out well.
Then why wasn't voting here today?
The, the door. While there, that is a handic, a code-compliant handicap temporary ramp, the door does not have a handicap push button.
I see. Okay.
We had, we had inquired about having somebody present to open the door, and they said, as far as the state was concerned, that that was not acceptable. So that's the reason they had it over there.
Okay.
What's the difference if somebody's standing there, you know, when they open a door each time for the person?
But the doors, there's no automatic opener on that door either.
No, because this is temporary. This is a temporary ramp.
They would have had a person there to open the door for people, is what they meant, what Ed meant.
Oh, you're talking about out back?
Oh.
She's talking about out back?
Yeah, but it's just, but there's no ramp. You have to walk up, you know.
Right. That's right.
And coming out, there is an automatic, you know, right.
Yeah, it's just not surface in there. But I would expect that the opening is accessible if somebody needed to get in.
Is there a way we can change something with that fire department door, so it doesn't have to be propped open all the time?
Actually, the fire...
During heating season?
The fire chief is working on that.
It just seems...
He was looking at a different system.
Yeah.
That'd be better. Yeah.
He's talked about it a couple of times.
Yeah.
I think it's gotten a lot more use since it's been built than maybe they anticipated, so yeah, it's kind of a, once it's shut, it's locked automatically, right? So you have, that's why it's set up the way, but yeah, there should be a way of just disengaging the...
But I mean, leaving a door open all winter, not all winter, but when people are in the building, it just doesn't make any sense.
Because that's still drawn heat right there when you walk in. You can hear it running.
As long as it's being looked into, that's good. I don't have anything else.
Marlene, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Ed, do you have anything else?
Yes, make a motion to adjourn.
All those...
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Great. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.